Good evening and welcome to the public hearing for the Livingston Zoning Board of Adjustment. Today is October 22, 2024. If you are an applicant for a D or U variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of the variance exists and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you will require an affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member Board of Adjustment. Other variances require a majority of six members to grant that variance. Note that we only have six people today. If you are an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision, and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you are an objector to any type of variance that has been granted, you too may appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of the notice of decision. If you do file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of complaint to the Planning Administrator Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger and West Essex Tribune, and a copy was also posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. In addition to having notice posted, notice this meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or to make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you would like to address the board, please come to the front and use the microphone so we can make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. We will now call the roll. Ms. Hollis?
Mr. Kenya.
President.
Mr. Shaw. Ms. Marat.
Here.
Mrs. Sherman.
Here.
Ms. Yuan.
Here.
Chairman Beer.
Here.
We have our quorum. Ms. Khan, Mr. Horn, and Vice Chair Connor are not present this evening. We do have our Board Attorney also present.
Thank you, Ms. Hollis. If you could call the first application?
First matter scheduled for this evening is a variance for Block 3501, Lot 15, 95 Veer Terrace, application number 2024-28-V-Teng. T-E-N-G is the last name.
That was adjourned, right?
We'll note, Mr. Chairman, that that application has been adjourned to Tuesday, December 10th at 7:00 p.m.
Would you like to call the next one?
The next matter scheduled for this evening is a variance for Block 454005, Lot 6, 16 Winans Road, application number 2024-25-V-Ean Telfer and Jody Aranias. That was continued from August 27, 2024.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Daniel Dubinett, D-A-N-I-A-L, last name Dubinett, D-U-B-I-N-E-T-T.
Mr. Dubinett, do you swear or affirm that any and all statements and testimony presented to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
I do.
Please consider yourself under oath. Would you please kindly repeat your...I know that we went through this the last...
Absolutely. I'll keep it short. I got my master's degree from NJAT in 1995. I was licensed in 2001. I've been practicing residential architecture for over 20 years. I am a resident of Livingston. I grew up in Livingston. I had my practice in Livingston, and my license is current and in good standings.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture. If you please tell us what you've done for us.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for hearing our case again. We were able to take the board's comments into consideration, some of the neighbors' comments into consideration, and we were able to...we are still seeking a habitable-floor-area variance. However, we reduced our application by 279 square feet. So previously, we were seeking a variance of 3,008...no, I'm sorry, 3,798 square feet, which was about 19% of the lot. Again, and I'll go through the testimony, but we're in the R4 zone. However, we have a lot size that's 19,834 square feet, so we're pretty large. So the minimum required is 9,375. So we're significantly over. So we felt before that the floor plan and design was appropriate, but however, we were able to find some square footage that brings us down to a number of 3,519 square feet. So without compromising too much of our internal spaces, we were able to shrink some of the fat, I guess, and come up with a plan that brings us to 3,519, which is 17.7% of this lot. So it's a very low percentage. Not that we would ask for it, but 30% is the max allowed, and we're at 17.7. And we also did some things...Chairman made a comment, which I get it. We took the...we had two gables, and I'll go over the plans, but we had two gable roofs that were a 12-on-12 roof pitch. We reduced the roof pitch to become 10-on-12, which brings down, again, the massing of the home. And all this application is 100% about FAR or actually not FA, how about the floor area. And floor area really is a function of the mass of the home, trying to keep the mass of the architecture so it doesn't feel like it overpowers the site and/or the neighbors. So we don't need any other bulk variances. We're 10 feet away from our adjacent neighbor on the right. We're over 26 feet to the neighbor to the left, and we are 42 feet back from the street for a garage. And one interesting thing that...I didn't have the information last time, but there was a conversation about lot coverage, so I was able to prepare for us an exhibit that shows the differential from what's existing to proposed is about a 7% increase. So again, a modest increase in lot coverage compared to what we had. We're also going to show you an exhibit where we decided to do the engineering on the project, the site engineering. So as opposed to...normally, if we went to the town engineer, they would look at what's existing versus what's proposed, and the net differential is what you have to capture. So we decided to present to the board and testify that we would cover 100% of our impervious coverage, so all the water that is on our property will stand on our property. So before, the house had no stormwater management. So now, as a positive, a strong positive of this application is that we will control 100% of our impervious coverage. So really quickly, if I may, I'd like to take you through our exhibits. And if I may, I'd like to mark this as Exhibit A1, so it's slightly different than what you have, and it's a series of slides. It's a series of...1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 slides.
Mr. Dubinett, you said you wanted to mark it A1, but we had A1 marked...
I apologize, A2.
So no, this will be A6.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the first slide is fairly easy. We're seeing the existing survey with the house, driveway, detached garage are proposed on the right, and we see how we're significantly far away from the neighbor to the left, which is a positive. Our lot width is 100 feet wide, and again, in the zone, 75 feet is the minimum. So we're 25 feet larger than what's allowed, and what's interesting about this design, and it's all about the design of the house, I think, is that the house is only 55 feet wide. If we had a 75-foot wide walk...I can do that.
Wide lot?
Thank you. And we do the required setbacks, 10 feet and 12 feet, we would allow a 55-foot-wide home, but because our lot width is 100, we'd be allowed a 70-foot-wide home on this lot. So we're at 55 feet, so I felt like that was a very important design to maintain, so we kept open airspace around the neighbors. And being 55 feet wide is a significantly different feeling than being 70 feet wide and 35 feet tall. And you'll see in the architecture, I stepped in the second floor, so it's not a big gigantic mass. It actually has some movement on the second floor. I've brought the roof lines down from the top of the house down to the bottom to soften the feel. So I think that the design, the architecture of the home hides the mass very well, will not negatively impact the streetscape, the neighbors to the right, to the left, to the rear. Part of our plan, and we'll testify to it, is that we're not changing any grade in the back. Only one tree has to come down as a result of this application. So we're...we were, of course, obviously happy before, and we were happy to try to make some adjustments, and I think that now that the house is at 3,519, it's very similar to the R3 maximum. And what's interesting is the R3 minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet. We're at almost 20. So I thought that was a kind of good measure to work with. The next slides is exactly what you have, which is your floor plans. And again, I testified last time that the genesis of this house and the plan derived from creating a floor plan that was efficient in terms of not needing an extra space. We don't have a living room. We don't have a separate dining room. So we kept it, and I'd like to run through it really quickly. We have a two-car garage. It's slightly larger than the 450 square feet that they give us, but we did reduce the garage size. We have a mudroom when you walk in, modest in size. Then you walk past a food pantry. Then we get to our kitchen, and again, everything was designed ergonomically for the depth of cabinets, the size of the aisles, the size of a nice island. And then we moved to our dining area, which will be our breakfast and dining area, and then a family room. So again, nothing extraneous or extempor...you know, just really where the spaces we're going to live, and we felt like, okay, that should be appropriate sizes, and there's nothing very large about them. There's a foyer, and the foyer is a double-height foyer, and again, that square footage is counted twice. It's about 100 square feet that we accounted for for the second floor, and a guest bedroom and bath on the first floor. So again, looking at the floor plan, typically, you might want to start out with a center-hall colonial, but we loaded everything to the right, and we kept the width of the home to the 55. So again, I feel like that's an important...something to bring back, you know, it's sort of the...
I'm going to cut you off just a little bit. I think some of the stuff you've kind of gone through last time, so we'll focus more on the changes from the massing and those pictures. I think that'll be the most helpful.
Perfect.
I think there might be some people from the public who'd like to see that, too. That'd be great.
Okay. So again, we reduced the house by 278 square feet from the previous application, which brings us to 3,519. I think I'd like to get to the part where most people were concerned about, which is the coverage on the property. So we get to this slide, which we did not have before. You do have it, I guess, in an exhibit we presented a couple days ago, but what this shows is...
Mr. Dubinett, can we...Mr. Chairman, with your permission? Because are these exhibits that have been submitted to the board?
We submitted them on Friday electronically, so I don't know if it's something that you had the...
All right, well, let's go back to...let us go back to Exhibit A6. All right. You prepared that exhibit?
Yes.
And what date is that exhibit?
The 27th of September is our date of the drawing.
Okay, so that's different than the one that's 9/18. That's a similar exhibit, but not the same, correct?
It should be the same. If you have this engineering drawing, it should be the same.
Well, the one that we have on 9/18 was part of A1.
Unless I'm not seeing clearly. No, I have 9/27, so we could say it's a different date, and I can testify that the information is the same.
Jackie, do you have A6? That was submitted electronically, A6?
Yes.
And then this new exhibit that we have, would you describe what that is? Please.
So this exhibit, A6?
No, this is going to be A7.
A7 is a drawing my office prepared. It's an engineering drawing that shows the stormwater management for the property, and what I'd like to testify...
And if I could, what date is that?
9/27, 2024.
And that was sent electronically on Friday?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So this drawing is 100% geared for lot coverage and stormwater management. So what we plan on doing is capturing the rear of the house into the gutters, into the downsides, and going underground into a storage tank, a drywall tank or seepage pit. And that seepage pit is designed to handle the back portion of the house, and our plan is to then capture the front of the house and go underground and get ourselves to the stormwater basin that exists at the property. So ideally, that's the best place to put your water because it goes into our stormwater sewer system, and...but because of the topography of that, I believe, that we'll be able to capture all the water that sheds off the roof planes that point toward the front of the house, go underground, get into our stormwater system, and the back portion will be controlled via...
Mr. Dubinett, I'm going to interrupt you again, and I apologize.
Yes.
We don't have...first of all, we don't have copies of A6 and A7, and they're not...we haven't picked it up electronically yet? It was in a link that was sent on Friday? Okay. We would need a copy sufficient to distribute to the board if you...regardless of what the outcome is this evening, that you submit that to Ms. Hollis, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So again, so the...and if anybody wants to see the calculations, I can go over the calculations. If not, I would move to, I guess, our next exhibit. But part of this grading plan and stormwater management shows how we're going to protect all the trees at the back of the house, and so I think there's some concern from the neighbors in the rear. What will the grade be? What will the trees be? And so at the end of this project, every tree that remains in the back stays. Only one tree, like I said, in the front of the house, will come down as a result of this. So there'll be no change to the grade in the backyard. And again, we'll capture all our water.
I'm sorry, can we just go over the exact changes we requested last time? Because this engineering can work with you on that?
Yes.
And get the approval, but we need to know the zoning...
Yeah, but what I guess what I just want to hit home about is if we went through the engineering process independent of this board, we would only be required...this is important. We'd only be required to get the net differential.
Mr. Dubinett, I'm going to interrupt you because the board has no jurisdiction over stormwater.
Okay, fair. I just wanted to testify that we're going to control 100% of our water. Moving on. But I do know that the neighbors had a strong concern about lot coverage, and since we're talking about lot coverage, and I know this is not a change, but it was information I did not have previously, because again, the architecture is very...the change to the architecture is very simple. We reduced the square footage, and I reduced the pitch of the roof to 10-on-12. So those are like, if I could just boil it down, those are the only two changes that we made for the prior application. All the other information I'd like to present tonight is information I didn't have before, which might make everybody feel more comfortable about the project.
We just need to know what was changed, what we requested.
Just two things. Reduce the floor area and reduce the roof pitch. So...
On that note, does anyone on the board have any questions regarding this testimony? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I got...well, two questions.
Yes.
On the previous drawings, it showed the height of the roof was like 31.95, and now it seems higher at 34.13.
Hmm. I think because we made all the roof pitches 10-on-12, just to keep it to...we changed the front pitches from 12-on-12 to 10-on-12, so I think we changed all of them so that maybe brought the roof height up, which I'm happy to change that to keep it at the 32.
Yeah, basically.
Thank you.
And then the other question is the...I don't remember if we touched on this the last time, but the dormer that's like up in the...seems to be in the attic area, is that...
Just aesthetics for the back. I think we...one of the...thank you, and I apologize, I forgot this change. I didn't know it was substantial, but there was two peaks in the back of the house. I eliminated those, and then we looked at it, it was like, well, it looks kind of simple, so the dormer was to give it, you know, break up the roof line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anybody in the public have any questions? Feel free to come up. Statements will be later, questions now.
I have a question for you.
Come on up. Let's get you up front. Do you want to...
Richard Heller, 11 Claremont Avenue, Block 4005, Lot 20. We're directly behind the house in question here.
Right.
On Claremont. I just have a quick question for the architect. I made a copy of the plans that were online. I just...I can't tell the square footage of the covered porch in the back. Can you give us the square footage of that?
Yes, I could do that. 245 square feet.
All right. That was my question. Thanks.
That was easy. Next, please come on up.
Alan Barron, 9 Claremont. We share a corner with the property, so just like three or four questions.
Go first, go right ahead.
The square footage of the living space of the new home is what? I'm sorry again.
The square footage of the living space is 3,519 square feet.
Okay. What is the allowable square footage for our R4 house? Can the board tell me that?
I can answer that.
3,220. 3,220, okay. I recall from last hearing that the board gave instructions that said, if you're seeking a variance, you have to provide...you have to provide a reason, a compelling reason that why you need that variance. So what is the reason being given to exceed the variance for R4?
There are many reasons. First one being that we do have a lot that's almost 20,000 square feet, so we are...we feel that...I'm going to say, we feel it's a little unfair, and I'd like to show you the exhibit, but in the R3 zone, if someone had this lot, they could build this home. We have this sized lot, but for zoning reasons that...and I'd like to maybe delve into that, but for zoning reasons, we are significantly larger than most homes in the R4. So I think it's appropriate to feel like, okay, well, if we were in the R3, we can have this. What makes it R3 versus R4? It's an imaginary line that, you know, they have to make, different zones. So we feel that it's unfair to say to us, well, you have this lot, and if you were two streets over, you could build this, but since you're not, you can't.
Are you seeking to rezone in R3?
No. R4.
Mr. Brown, if I can interrupt you for a second? I think the question was, what's the hardship that is supporting the application for the difference?
Well, there's a...I guess there's two...and I'm not an attorney, but there's two types of hardships. One is a C1, which is based on lot size, topography, which may trigger variance. The second is C2. So C2 is a flexible variance and/or hardship that says, okay, well, the result of this application is not negatively going to impact the neighbors, the neighborhood, so there is no negative impact, and so by allowing this, it's okay. And so that's where we're seeking a C2, which is we've done...well, and the other thing is that the...if we designed a 3,220-square-foot home, and if it was 70 feet wide, which is allowed, and 35 feet tall and close to the neighbors, it would be worse. So we feel like this is a better, more sensitive...although it gives us 300 square feet, a 10-by-30 room on a 20,000-square-foot lot, I don't feel like that's egregious, and I feel like I can stand here and say that this is a good application and that no one's light airspace will be inhibited by this. So the width would be the same, the height. So I felt like, okay, well, they've been here almost 20 years raising their family, and we designed a plan that worked for them, and I don't think any part of the plan is egregious and obnoxious. I think, yeah, so I don't know if that...
Thank you.
Kind of...
Two more questions. When the last hearing wrapped up, I know there was a recommendation from the board on the house design to maybe rethink the wraparound driveway to the side because it unnecessarily possibly increases the impervious footprint and to be thinking more about a front-facing entrance into a two-car garage. Does the new plan still include the wraparound, or does it have a front entrance now?
The new plan still has the side-facing garage, which as a...in terms of what you see from the streetscape, it's much more attractive than a front-facing garage, and again, that's why we kept the width at 55. And the lot coverage, I wanted to get to it, is to show you that the increase from what is existing to proposed is only 7%, so it's a very modest increase in lot coverage. So we didn't feel like lot coverage was an issue. It's 26% of the lot, which is a very low coverage number, and I have some data to show that we're way, as a percentage, way under the...we're under than the neighborhood in terms of percentages and coverages and...so to answer your question, it's still a side-facing.
Thank you, because I do recall the board, some of the concern was that the hardscape coming around the side of the house to the declining grade also helps bring water around the house versus coming to the front of the house where it has to be swept up in gray. So my last question is maybe for the board. I don't understand how these processes work. I get confused very easily, so I'm kind of confused by tonight's hearing to some degree. It was my understanding from being at the last hearing, as well as I think some other folks, my wife included, that the way the last hearing was left was that there was an argument made for variance to the R4 lot maximum size for our house. The board declined that, said, go back and revisit that. Ideally, if you can reduce the impervious footprint as well, do that as well. There wasn't a compelling reason given for building higher than the R4 zoning requirements. I guess I'm a...and I believe the direction was go and design a house. We're not providing with this variance. Go and design a house that fits within the R4 3,220 max house size, and...but yet, we're back here kind of taking another stab at the apple. I'm just kind of trying to understand the process. I thought the direction from the board last time was to say... from the, from the board last time was to say, go build within the 3220, and at the same time, if you can, also try to reduce some of the impervious footprint. And that's not what I'm hearing presented today. So I'm just a little bit confused on what, what we're looking to answer today.
Let me try to clarify. As a board, we have to see what's brought before us, the application, the lot, the house. And if we're uncomfortable with something, we try to make a recommendation to the applicant on how to make adjustments that might be more appealing, or might sit better, if you want, whatever terminology you want to use, with the board and/or the public. The discussions last time were leading to, a lot of it leads to the mass of the house. And it was over, but we also wanted to reduce the mass, because there was a lot of concern from the, from the public. Other houses were a lot smaller, and this was maybe, yes, there are some bigger houses on the street, but maybe this was overwhelmed. So I think that's what they tried to do, was to try to cut roof lines and everything else, and also shrink. But we, we did not give direction to reduce to 3220, otherwise they wouldn't be coming back to us.
Gotcha, okay.
So it was trying to get, what, what can you do to make it better for everybody and still have an applicant, you know, something that you want?
Gotcha.
So that's kind of where we, we fall, and we try to, you know, try to be fair all the way around.
Gotcha, I appreciate that. Thank you.
No, no problem. Are there any other questions for this witness? Okay. Does anybody want to make a statement on the board?
I'll make one. I, I do feel that you have made some good concessions on the plan. One of them, just knowing what was discussed the last time, and the neighbors concerned about stormwater, if you're, if you are going to capture, as you say, that, you know, 100% off the site, then that's a benefit, regardless of the driveway on the side. The only other condition that I would like to see would be that the attic space can't be used in the future as living space. Otherwise.
Absolutely.
That's my other concern.
Thank you. Yeah.
Anybody else on the board?
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Attic now with the new design, is it a pull-down staircase?
Pull-down staircase.
Okay.
Anybody in the public like to make a statement? Please let counsel swear you in.
Sure.
I'll get used to this in the next 50 years. Richard Heller, H-E-L-L-E-R.
Correct.
All right. Mr. Heller, do you swear or affirm that any statements you make to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
Yes, I do.
Please consider yourself under oath.
Okay. Just in speaking to a number of neighbors, and some of them couldn't be here tonight because they're on a trip, the neighbors still have a general problem with the size of the house. I mean, they did reduce the square footage of the habitable area a little bit. They still have that covered back porch, which doesn't count as habitable space, still roofed space, it's still part of the house space. And that's 249 square feet as well, added on to, you know, what they're talking about there. The other concern raised by my neighbor Alan Barron was, you know, the driveway. I don't see how the stormwater management system captures the water from the driveway, right? The water from the driveway is just gonna run into the backyard, it's not connected to leaders.
I could go over the engineering drawings, but it will be connected.
So, you know, I think there's still a concern expressed about that. The fact of the matter is, by far, you know, this will be the largest house in the three-block neighborhood surrounding it. It is an R4 zone, we think it should be respected as an R4 zone. It's, it's great that their lot is a little bit bigger, but the town made a decision to create an R4 zone in this area. There's 88 houses in the neighborhood around the house, on Wynans Road, Claremont, Baldwin Terrace, and the relevant part of Mount Haven up in that area, and West Mount Pleasant Avenue on Route 10, adjacent to Wynans Road. 88 houses in that area. The average house size is 1,784 square feet. 72% of the houses in the neighborhood are under 1,900 square feet in total. Six of the houses had rebuilds or renovations in the last five years. All were kept within the R4 requirement of 3220. No house in the neighborhood is actually larger than 3,175 square feet. They're larger than that by far, plus the covered porch. So, you know, I think, I think the concern is that the R4 zone should be respected. There are no other houses of this size and caliber in the neighborhood. It's gonna stick out like a sore thumb. And no other house in the neighborhood has the side yard garage system as well. It's, you know, aesthetically pleasing or not, it doesn't match the neighborhood. The house, the character of the house, the mass of the house just doesn't match the neighborhood. And I think that's the concern that the neighbors, I don't want to say that the exact same thing that we said, you know, two months ago. But I mean, the neighbors still have many concerns on the size and design of this house, and the way that it will fit in, and we don't think it fits in with the neighborhood. And so that's the concern that we want to raise. If the board's interested, we can make available tomorrow copies. We have a copy of, you know, the square footage of every house in the neighborhood. We can make that available if you're interested in receiving that as an exhibit. I just don't have, you know, copies for everybody tonight. So you can let us know.
I don't, I don't think we need to copy that. Each application has to kind of stand on its own, and it's the local streetscape. So I appreciate that effort and understand what you're saying, but there's, you know, we can't look three blocks away. It's the street.
It's the street, it's the street.
Like five houses. It's not like, yeah, so, that, we get limited on certain stuff like that, and, but we understand your concerns, and we, you know, appreciate you bringing that forward.
Well, the houses, 14 Wynans and 18 Wynans are 1,400 square feet and 1,323 square feet. So those are your two closest houses right there. They're under 1,500 square feet. So those are their neighbors.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Heller, I just want to make sure so we're clear on the record. Are you familiar with the project memorandum that was issued by the Assistant Township Engineer, the date of May 31, 2024?
The one denying their application? Is that what you're talking about?
No, that, that's the denial of the application. There's another document that's entitled Project Memorandum. In it, just for clarification, among other things, it says, "It appears that the proposed improvements may increase the impervious coverage on the subject property."
Right.
"As part of the building permit submission, the applicant will be required to submit a lot surface drainage permit application with plans to verify that the scope of work with a summary of existing versus a proposed impervious coverage to verify that the net increases, any additional grading and drainage that may be proposed, limits disturbances, et cetera, all demonstrating compliance with the Township Stormwater Management Lot Surface Drainage Ordinance Number 35, 2008." There's also comments about what happens with pipes and drywells at the engineering, I'm not quarreling, I'm just trying to make a record of it. And it also references that the existing property appears to have a shared driveway, and talks about the driveway dynamics. But this is all falls within, as Ms. Hollis said, in the purview of the Engineering Department. Am I correct, Jack?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that, yeah.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Come on forward.
Please, please kindly state your name.
I'm Stephen Lew, I am representing 15 Wynans Road.
Say it one more time, slowly, sir.
15 Wynans Road.
And your name again?
Stephen Lew, L-E-W.
And are you appearing on behalf of yourself, or are you representing someone?
Yeah, I'm representing 15 Wynans Road. Some of my parents are.
But are you a lawyer or anything of that nature?
No, I'm just resident of this street.
Then you can speak on behalf, I'm gonna suggest to you, that you can speak on your behalf, but you can't speak on behalf of someone else unless you go, you go to the three years of law school that I had to do and do all that kind of stuff, right?
Does a MFA count in digital design and layouts? Did six years, man, come on, give me a break.
Mr. Lew, do you swear or affirm that any statements you make to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
I do swear.
All right, thank you. Consider yourself under oath. Thank you very much for your patience.
So just a little bit of background about myself. I have an MFA in design, as well as layouts and, you know, computer graphics and stuff like that. So kind of seeing these maps, definitely a little familiar to me. You know, being within that field, I've taught art for six years, and the first lesson I normally teach my students is about proportion, you know, big, tall, small, medium, you know, all that kind of stuff, tall, wide. Just based off the layouts here, I think it's just kind of clear that I don't think this house fits on this street. Growing up and living in Livingston for 30 years, you know, I think it's a little bit out of proportion, especially just the way how the street actually is. When you compare it to all the other houses, you know, with the average variance of, was it 18, was it 1,831 feet? I just, I really truly believe it doesn't fit on this street. And I apologize for being blunt about that. But, you know, other than that, you know, according to, you know, Mr. Heller's points as well, the term McMansion, it, just the overall appeal, I just don't believe it fits, unfortunately. In addition to that, you know, I also do have a couple of authorizations. One of my best friend's childhood friend actually lives at 18 Wynans Road, and, you know, unfortunately, he's not here because he's traveling at the moment. So speaking as well as for him, but fortunately, I own Alan and Regina Chen at 18 Wynans Road, and Wilkins at 21's Road, as well as Grace and Joe Yang at 25 Wynans Road. In addition to Elena E. Polito at 17.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You can't present testimony on behalf of other people.
Gotcha, okay.
All right? So that, I'm not looking to be difficult, but what you're doing, if it influences the board, it's inappropriate. So I can't, my suggestion to you is you cannot talk about what other people in the neighborhood, regardless of whether it's accurate or inaccurate,
Got it.
say or present to this board. I understand they might be away, they might have something, but they have to come in and go under oath. You can't testify on their behalf.
Yeah, totally apologize for that, okay. Yeah, no worries. But yeah, you know, thanks.
Answer my own question. Come on up.
Yeah, Alan Barron, 9 Claremont.
Mr. Brown, do you swear or affirm that any statements you make to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
Yes, I do.
All right, consider yourself under oath, please.
Yes. I will be, I will be short. I am short, anyway. I just wanted to share, when I, a little anecdote, which is, when I left the hearing last time, I have to admit, I think the board had commented on their appreciation for the civility that the neighbors had shown to the applicant, and there was a lot of empathy in the room. And I gotta say, I left, frankly, with a pit in my stomach. I didn't feel good about the variance not being granted. Unfortunately, I had been really busy with a lot more important stuff, and, but this card has been sitting on my desk for the last couple of weeks, and I've been meaning to handwrite it, and I haven't gotten around to it. I was gonna write the applicant a letter telling them how I felt coming out of that hearing, that I was not happy how it, how it came out for them. And to no disregard, honestly, both myself, some other people out of the other hearing, to some degree, felt that the architects had done the family a disservice. They had done the family a disservice by giving them the high hopes and expectations that they could build this house on an R4 zone lot, and that they had, could do that without having a good reason for doing so. And I felt, I, I just walked away feeling that we're very misled into the house design that the lot could support. I actually drove around our neighborhood, I drove around town, I was doing this to help the applicant, to be honest. And I found houses all in our area that were, frankly, huge, beautiful, and I was gonna present those addresses to them so they could see what was possible beyond what the architect was presenting. 9 Wildwood, beautiful four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house, 3,240 square feet. 56 Edgemere, 3,215 square feet. Five bedrooms, four baths, within 3,215. 66 Edgemere, 3,000 square foot and 2 feet, four bedrooms, three baths. 18 Park Drive, five bedrooms, six-and-a-half baths, 3,200 square feet. 16 Schindler Way, four bedrooms, 2725. 96 Edgemere, another 3,200 square foot house, five bedrooms, four-and-a-half baths. Four Spear, 3,100 square foot house. And I was gonna present 15 Wildwood, which is right in our neighborhood, again, 2,300 square feet. So my only point is, there are, are a lot of different house designs that get you to a four- and five-bedroom house, to a very substantially sized house, well with under that 3,220. And I wanted to present that to the applicant with possibly even the suggestion, one of the things they might want to do, and I know it's expensive, is to maybe get a second opinion on a design from another architect, so they could see what was possible within the bounds of an R4, versus trying to take this design, which clearly didn't fit the space, and trying to like carve the corners off it and hone it down. So I just wanted to share that with you, because I felt bad about how it came out. But in driving around the neighborhood and looking at, at stats, you really can get, you know, four, five bedrooms, three, four baths, within 3,220, it's really huge. And then, lastly, I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Heller had said, just so the board understands, because one of the conversations last time at the last hearing was this whole concept of Livingston, to some degree, you know, in the whole McMansion conversation, does need to somehow take care of its quote starter homes, so that people do have an entry point into the town. That was one of the issues raised last time. There are, half the houses on Wynans are under 1,500 square feet. The average home size on Wynans is 1,831. That's the average. There are only two houses on Wynans above 3,000 square feet. Those were both recent renos. One is, one is 3,175. And then the other reno is actually 26, not, not 31. So, and again, if you look at the entire neighborhood, in the streets that are directly adjacent to Wynans, so that's Mount Havens, Claremont, Baldwin, the end cap that hits Route 10 that surrounds Wynans, there's, there's, you know, the, there's, there's no house that exceeds 3,175. So it just makes a statement to what the neighborhood looks and feels like, and it also makes a statement around what is truly possible within 3,220. And, and you can see from some of these other addresses, you can actually really do a lot with that, with that size footprint. But I think it's a lot harder getting there when you're starting with a 3,700, 3,800 square foot house, and trying to trim it and hone it down to something else that's gonna fit in R4 zone. From my perspective, it does feel like the applicant is looking for a variance to make this an R3 zone. That's how I think the board should probably look at this, that this is actually looking to rezone this lot. And if there's good compelling reason to rezone this lot for an R3, then I think you should probably accept their application. But if there's not a compelling reason to turn this from an R4 to an R3, simply because the lot is deeper, it is still an R4, and I agree with Mr. Heller, the lot, the zoning of the, of the street should be, should be respected. We have rules for a reason, so, thank you, thank you.
I have a question, and then I guess my client would like to have a comment as well. But you're in the neighbor, in the rear, this, this guy here. What I don't have, this is you.
Yes.
What I don't have is your rear yard setback. Do you have an idea how deep your rear yard is from your back of your house to the property line?
I don't. I don't know exactly. I'd say maybe 70.
I could probably look at the Google.
50 to 70 feet, something like that.
Let's say 50. We're 100.
You need to be near the microphone, so that it can pick you up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I said 50 to 70-ish. I don't, I could get the exact.
Call it 50.
Call it 50.
We are 100 feet away from your property, plus your 50, so we're talking 150 feet away. We've testified that we're not changing graves, we're not changing trees. So, of course, we look at the negative impact to the neighbors, and I just don't see it other than, you could say, okay, well, we reduced the house 300 square feet. I can guarantee you, you will not notice 300 square feet, plus or minus. So I feel like I did do a service for my client. They did ask for this. I didn't impose this. I gave them their wishes and their wants, and they wanted 3,800. And I convinced them to, let's bring it down, let's, let's, let's come to an agreement. So I think it's kind of unfair to be 150 feet away through a dense set of trees and still have a problem with the application.
If I, if I, if I can respond, if I can respond, because you and I had a good conversation before the last hearing.
Yes.
And I did relay my concerns about drainage, because over the years.
Yes.
We have invested heavily in backyard irrigation systems to get a lot of that runoff. We get most of the runoff, because you can see the grade does, if you look at the grade map, the topography, you can see it runs from the upper corner down to our corner. But we have mitigated that both with the natural berm, with the irrigation we put in place. And I'm highly appreciative of leaving most of the trees on the property, not cutting down the signature trees, and all the irrigation systems put in. So I have zero complaints about that, and thrilled you're doing that. I think that's a very different issue, however, than whether the house fits in with the neighborhood and the other side. and the other size of the houses in the area, which I, but.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I think both, both parties have indicated, you might, I think you agree to disagree. All right? And you've articulated, both of you, where you are, so I don't think that any further, unless there's something exceptional that I'm missing, that you need to go any further.
No, thank you very much.
All right?
Thank you. Please.
Okay, do I have this on high board? Thank you again for, sorry, that's taking so long, but appreciate your time again.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you, and I apologize. I need you to say your name and spell it.
It's Jody Aranias, A-R-A-N-I-A-S, Telfer.
And, Ms. Aranias, you, you understand that the testimony that you're gonna give this evening, or the statements you're gonna make, are gonna be true, accurate, and complete?
Absolutely.
Yes, and you're the, you're, you're a homeowner here.
I am the homeowner of 16 Wyandottes Road.
Thank you very much. Consider yourself under oath.
Thank you. Just, I just wanted to mention, we are very happy with Danny as our architect, and he definitely did not do us a disservice. We had asked for this. My husband and I have been living here for 18 years. So this was our starter home. Starter homes eventually grow, and we have been in this neighborhood, have no problems with any of you guys, and quite frankly, never even saw many of you over the years, because different age of our kids or whatever, but we did take into consideration a lot of your concerns, and I really hope that you understand that we don't plan on leaving, and we really love this neighborhood, and if you look around town, this is a great town, people wanna be here. There's other blocks in the area that have beautiful homes that they built, and maybe even bigger than ours, that are next to little sizes. But I think that for us, staying in this place with the plan that we worked on with Danny, definitely took into consideration a lot of your things for our starter home, and now we're ready to move up with our family and to this same property that we own. But, thank you for listening to me, and appreciate everybody's time tonight.
Thank you. Do you have a question, no, Steven, please?
Anyone to comment as well?
Yes, please.
Hi, Judith Heller, 11 Claremont Avenue, directly behind the property in question. Do you swear or affirm that any statements you make to the board today? Do you believe? I do. Thank you. I just wanna point out that this is an R4 zone, so the size of the property is irrelevant. If you wanna put something in an R3 zone, go to an R3 zone. Otherwise, what's the point of having zones at all? Just because it's larger, and I get it, it's larger, you wanna use the space, it's, it's, I get it. But all of the neighbors have expressed their concerns, and the way in which this does not fit in with the rest of the thing. You can think what you want, but drive down the street, nobody's got a driveway on the side, nobody's got any of the gate, nobody's got any of it, and nobody's got 3,500 square feet. 3,220 is the rule. And I think, honest, to me, it's a slap in the face to every neighbor who spoke about this, to come back with something that's more than 3,220, and does not address that side driveway that was specifically mentioned. So, thank you.
I, I guess I'll chime in a little bit here, and as I've stated, we do everything we can to listen to everybody, and we do listen to everybody. Putting a few ground rules in place is, we can't design the style of the house. We don't care how many bedrooms there are inside, they could put in 45 or one. That doesn't make a difference to us, and I'm just trying to explain so everyone understands where we're sitting from. Yes, it is, it is over. The difference, if they took two-and-a-half feet off the side of the house, this would be 3,220. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just, from a calculation point of view, I, I'm an engineer. They could break this 35 feet high and square, one big box, and we can't say anything about it. It could be 30, 3,220, and a big square, totally, and that's perfectly legal. We can't decide where their driveway is, we can't decide how they designed the house, we can't decide how many bedrooms. We can only look at the property, and the application, and the concerns, and try to keep things in control, right? We all don't want McMansions. I don't think Mr. Dubinay wants to make a McMansion, we don't want McMansions, that's why we have rules. We have habitable floor area, and we have habitable floor area ratio, both looking at two different things. And I'm just trying to explain so everyone really understands. And the idea of those two controls is to control the size of the house, right? And we have to take that information as a board, digest it, and decide if it's really egregious or not egregious. So, the other thing was the water, that, that's really not an issue. We, you know, and I think they did try to take care of that, from my opinion, they were trying to capture all the water, which they don't have to, they can still let as much water that runs off today run off tomorrow. That's the rule, I think they're trying to do that. So I just wanted to clarify, because I know there's a lot of concerns, I understand that, I think this board recognizes it, I think over the years, I've been in this board for a long time now, I've been very consistent trying to work with everybody. So, I just wanted to bring that forward. Does anybody else on the board have any comments to that or to anything else that's been said? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Please.
The applicant should understand that there's six members of the board sitting here. In order to get an approval of a D4 variance, you need five yes votes. So we don't have a full complement of seven. So if it comes in four to two, and I'm not, I have no idea how anybody's voting, I don't discuss that with them, and I don't know, but understand, I know that you don't have an attorney with you, you're proceeding with a board of only six members, which means you would need to get five yes votes out of the six board members. If you're prepared to proceed, do you understand that? Okay, you indicated yes. All right, so it's up to you whether you wanna proceed now.
I'll just add in that if it does get voted down, anything that comes back has to be substantially different than what you have now. You can't just say, oh, I'll take the two feet off, and it's good. It has to be a substantially different design, is that correct, Counselor?
That's correct.
So, just so, just so you understand all the rules, I want you, and if you wanna talk to your architect over that.
Yeah, because the law is designed so that, and not your application, if an application comes in and gets denied, you just can't come back with, with the same application or something a little similar and try and do something else. You'll be prohibited from doing that by law, not by them, but by the law. So, before you proceed, you need to consider the six votes, or the six members here, and whether or not you wanna take that risk. Okay?
This'll be the last one, because you need to move forward. What? Okay, then we'll be on, okay, my mistake then.
Oh, yeah, hi, my name is Ray Lou.
Wait, wait, hold it. I regret to inform you that we concluded the public comment, so we can't open it again.
I'm sorry.
We're at the point now where the board's gonna make a decision, depending upon what the applicant said. I, I don't make up the law, I just have to enforce it, that's it. Okay?
Sorry about that.
If I heard that.
Please, get to the mic, so you didn't catch that.
Hi, yes, I do feel good about this application, so we'd like to move forward, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, would someone on the board like to make a motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could for one second.
Hold that thought.
All right. From my understanding, there's three conditions that the applicant has agreed to, to provide to the, to the, to Ms. Hollis or whoever is appropriate, the A6 and A7 exhibits in multi, in the necessary number of, of exhibits that need to be produced, that the roof is agreed is gonna be 32 feet, and that the attic space is not living space and will remain non-living space. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So the affirmative answer is yes. So in the event, in terms of what the board is considering, whether or not to approve this application, if it approves, it'll be with those three conditions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, one other question, though, what about the water condition, since they said they were gonna capture 100%? I know we don't have purview, but.
It's really, you really can't make that a condition. You can hear it and consider it, but respectfully, that's something for the engineering department to make that determination, as is set forth in the project memo that I was discussing with Mr. Heller previously. By the way, the resolution, if approved, will say that they have to comply with the project memorandum.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I'll second it.
It's a motion for approval?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that was a motion for approval with the conditions noted on the record. Mr. Kenya?
Yes, please, those conditions apply.
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, with the conditions.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Yuan?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, everyone in the public, for attending and being a part of this, we do really appreciate it.
The next matter scheduled for this evening is a variance for Block 4009, Lot 13, 27 Mount Haven Drive, application number 2024-44-V, 27 Mount Haven LLC.
Hold on one second. No, no, yes. Right to the point. Right to the point, I'm done.
Counsel, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Matthew Passata, Law Firm, Sales, Commiss, and Gross, representing the applicant, 27 Mount Haven LLC.
In terms of the witnesses that you're gonna present?
Yes, I'm gonna have two witnesses. First, I'm gonna have my architect, and then following my architect, I'm gonna have my planner. My architect is Ayman Cedra, and my planner is Nick Ravianno.
Thank you. With your permission, I'd like to swear in both of those gentlemen.
Sure, sure.
Do you both confirm or acknowledge and agree that any testimony or statements you give to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
I do.
Please consider yourselves under oath, so I'll let Mr. Passata make a decision as to how to qualify either or both of you.
Sure, let me just qualify, straightforward. Mr. Cedra, can you please describe what professional degrees you hold, and whether or not your license is still in good standing, and name two boards you've been qualified before in the past?
Sure, I graduated from Egypt, from Faculty of Engineering, in 1999, and I became licensed architect here in 2016. I'm licensed in New York, and Pennsylvania, and Tennessee as well. I testified in front of this board, and also Rutherford, Bayonne, Jersey City, to name a few. My license is still in a good standing.
Terrific. Does this board accept them as professional in architecture?
Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objections, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture.
Terrific, and then I'd also like to qualify my expert in planning, Mr. Nick Ravianno, same questions. Can you please state what professional license you have, and whether or not you're still in good standing, and just name two boards you've been qualified in the past as a professional planner?
Yes, hold a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, a law degree from the Temple University School of Law, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been qualified by this board, as well as over 100 boards in 18 different counties in the state of New Jersey.
That's more than two, but thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objections, the witness is accepted as expert in planning.
Thank you, Board.
Terrific. Thank you, everyone. Tonight, we're here for a habitable floor area ratio variance. Originally, when we were proposing this application, we had anticipated that it would have been an addition. Of recently, we realized that the foundation and the walls themselves truly don't have the structural integrity, so purposes of construction, we are gonna modify, so it's gonna be a complete demo, construction rebuild. However, none of the bulk standards are changing, it's the exact same footprint, the only difference is, we're not gonna keep the foundational walls anymore, we're demoing them to do new walls. Everything else, same thing, same relief. With that being said, the ratio itself unfortunately is a product of the fact that the site is undersized, it is a natural hardship that we have. We could have built this development up to 3,220 feet, or a little more than 200 square feet below that, taking into consideration the character of the neighborhood and those bulk standards, so we didn't trigger any other variances, to give that assurance that it could actually be accommodated. With that being said, I'd like to have my architect take it away, what we're looking to do here.
I'm gonna start with going over the plans. This house, the first floor consists of, we're entering the house from the entry porch to a two-story foyer, we have, on the left side, we have the dining room and the living room. On the right side, we have two-car garage, going back to the backside of the house, we have the kitchen, and family room in the back, and also we have the guest room with its own bathroom and closet. Also, we have a powder room and pantry in this level as well. The livable area on this floor is 1,457 square feet, the garage area is 461 square feet. Next to that, we have the basement plan, which it will consist of open rec room, also we have a playroom, and bedroom with its own egress access. We have also a bathroom in this floor plan as well. The next sheet is the second floor, the second floor consists of four bedrooms, with one being the master bedroom with its own closets and the master bathroom. Two of the bedroom share a bathroom, and they have also walk-in closets. The bedroom number four, it's an en suite bedroom with its own closet and bathroom. Also, this floor has the laundry room, we have a pull-down stair in front of the linen closet, the pull-down stairs is for, to access the attic space. The elevations of this building, it's a colonial-style home with, this is the rendering here that shows the outside, it's, again, it's a colony.
Mr. Cedra, this rendering you have here, that was not submitted as part of the original application, correct?
This render, it was submitted, yes, it wasn't submitted as part of the original application, but it was emailed, I think, on Friday, or.
Okay, to earn the side of caution, just wanna enter this in as A1, rendering of the proposed improvement?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, going back to the second floor, I just wanna go over the area, so the, the livable area for the second floor is 1,550, with the total floor area ratio of 34.98%, which totals 3,018 square feet, and as you see, it's below the, the habitable floor area, which is the maximum, after code is 3,220. We are 202 square feet below this number. The, the, the design of the building, it's a colonial-style home with some modern accent to, to show hardy, horizontal hardy planks, and, you know, some wood slats stained. The color is between white and black, we have a standing seamless roof above the porch area and, and the garage, and also we have a, a stone base, you know, just to decorate the, the porch area. The, the rear and the sides of the house will be with the lap siding, again, throughout the, the whole rear and the two sides. The windows will be black, dark black roof. That's kinda like everything.
And just to confirm, the attic itself is a pull-down, so there would be no way to accommodate habitable space, correct?
Correct, yeah, the attic is just pulled down, and actually, the height of the building is 30 feet. is 30 feet and three-quarter. And if you look at this rendering, the highest, the highest point of the wall from the attic floor is five feet, so it's not, it's a very shallow roof line.
Terrific, I have no further questions for this witness.
Mr. Chair? I just want to confirm, Ms. Hollis, do you have a copy of the rendering?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Moving right along? Oh, you don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the application has to be changed, it says that it's for modification to the existing home, it's a completely new home.
That is correct.
That's true.
We no longer keep those foundational walls.
So, with the permit submission, will change the name to new single-family home?
Need to update the application, that's what they're saying, right?
Yes, do we update the application since then? No, it's still the same application, it was a recent news that we realized we couldn't keep the foundational walls.
I think the subject line of the application needs to get updated, that's what you're saying, right?
Yes, on the plans themselves should be updated, yes, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. All right, would you use my next witness to go further questions? Please.
Terrific. Nick, can you please walk us through why you believe justification for an E, or D4 variance?
Certainly, the applicant is before you this evening requesting a D4 FAR variance for a specific piece of property known as block 4009, lot 13, on the township tax maps. This is a house which presently contains an existing single-family dwelling. The applicant will be demolishing the single-family dwelling to construct a new dwelling under current building codes, also, will be fixing some existing zoning setback deficiencies that exist. As indicated in Mr. Passata's intro, this is an undersized lot, which is roughly 750 square feet smaller than the required lot size of the district. The applicant is requesting a 4.98 FAR habitable floor area variance. The applicant, as previously stated, is 200 square feet under the habitable floor area number, so this is certainly a house which is befitting of the size and the intent and purpose of the district. When we look at the FAR variance, the applicant must demonstrate that the lot can accommodate the increased FAR. When you look at this lot, it certainly advances purpose of zoning A of the municipal land use law, promotion of the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. The existing house has a side yard setback of 6.16 feet, with an aggregate side yard setback of 16 feet and change, which are both below ordinance standards. The applicant's proposal will be increasing the setbacks to a conforming scenario, both from the individual side yard setback and the combined side yard setback, certainly advancing purpose A. Additionally, it advances purpose G, sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. There is no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the granting of these variances. With respect to the public good, the applicant is adding onsite stormwater management system, which does not exist today, so it'll certainly be an improvement over the current condition.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Mr. Passata, can, I want to make sure I heard it correctly, so that the existing non-conforming conditions...
Right, that is the width of the...
Right, but those under the new home will be the same?
The exact same.
Okay.
Right.
I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? I will be my statement. Thank you. Does anyone on the board want to make a statement? I'll just say, I appreciate you keeping the mask down on this, and you had me really confused when I saw dashed lines for the wall, I'm like, what are they, until I figured it out. So, it's like, what's going on here? So, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make it. I'll second it.
That will be with the condition that the attic is not livable space, correct?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes, yes, that's the condition.
Thank you.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
Ms. Yuan?
Yes.
Chairman Beer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hollis, when you're ready, if you can call the next application?
The next matter scheduled for this evening is a variance for block 6001, lot 31, 14 Tower Road, application number 2024-50-V, 29 Tower Road LLC.
Good evening, everyone, may I approach this?
Please. What would you do if we said no?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. I'm here all week.
You sure you want me to turn it on? Maybe you're better off with it off.
May I be seated? Okay, well, good evening, everyone. For the records' purpose, my name is Stephen Sheppes, it's a great pleasure to be before you this evening. As similar to the other applications that you've entertained this evening, my client, 29 Tower Road LLC, is a property owner, is petitioning this board for a habitable floor area variance, also, a front yard setback variance and a rear yard setback variance. The property is in a R2 residential zone. I'm not going to belabor the point, I'm going to introduce the one and only witness this evening, John Babula, he is the project architect, he's very familiar with the site and the plans, so no further ado, I'd ask that he be sworn and briefly state his credentials for the record.
Good afternoon, Mr. Babula, do you swear or affirm that any and all statements and testimony you give to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
I do.
Please consider yourself under oath, and I'll leave the credentials to Mr. Shepp.
Very good, Mr. Babula, would you please briefly state your credentials as an architect for the record?
Sure, I graduated from NJIT with a Bachelor of Architecture in 2004. I've been practicing architecture for over 20 years. I received my New Jersey license in 2015, and I have testified before about over a dozen boards between Morris, Bergen, and Sussex County. I have testified before this board a few times, and my license is current and in good standing.
Very good, I offer Mr. Babula as a licensed architect to provide expert testimony in that area of expertise.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objection, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture.
Very good, Mr. Babula, in conjunction with this application, you prepared plans, is that fair to say?
Yes.
And are your plans based upon a current survey?
Yes.
And is your survey shown on the, on the plans that are here this evening?
Correct.
So, why don't you briefly tell us a little bit about the property, the size of the property, the zoning of the property, what exists on the property, and what's proposed for the property, not necessarily in that order?
Sure, the existing on the property is a one-story, single-family dwelling. The property is in the R2 zone, it is an undersized lot, 25,000 square feet is required where 10,625 exist. The existing front yard setback is 50 feet, we're proposing 45. The lot size itself is 85 feet by 125, where what is required is 125 feet by 200. So, we're 40 feet more narrow than what is required, but we are still conforming to the side yard setbacks, which are 15 feet on each side. The 200 feet that is required, we are at 125, so we're 75 feet short, which gives us the hardship for the front yard variance and the rear yard variance, which we are seeking. The, let's see, the proposed building coverage allowed is 2,655 square feet, currently, it's 1,600, and we are proposing 2,091, so we're about 500 square feet below the building coverage that's required. The maximum floor area that is allowed in this R2 zone is 4,870 square feet. We are going to demolish this one-story house, build a new two-story house, which is going to be 3,300 square feet. So, we're about 1,500 square feet then, lower than what's allowed for the floor area. We are seeking a floor area ratio variance, 18% is allowed, which, if the lot was conforming, would mean 4,500 square feet. We are asking 31%, which again, is that 3,300 square feet.
All right, John, let's tackle the front yard setback variance. Attached to the application itself was an aerial photograph, Google Earth. How does this proposed front yard setback of 45 feet comport with the other front yard setbacks along that side of Tower Road?
It actually lines up with the neighboring properties on either side, most of the houses are at that 45 feet, give or take.
Yeah, I would bring to the board's attention, that next to the application is a copy of the filed map, which was filed with the county clerk, and it shows on the filed map a required front yard setback in this, in this development, it was a private deed restriction, of 45 feet. So, it seems to stand to reason that the original developer set the houses all at 45 feet, based on the filed map restriction. So, is it fair to say, Mr. Babula, the houses on either side of us and going right along that side of the street are all basically setback at 45 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so now, let's talk about the rear yard setback. How deep is the lot?
The lot is 125 feet.
Okay, now, I presented to the board a, an exhibit, which I've took the liberty of pre-marking as Exhibit A1. Have you had opportunity to review this four-page exhibit, A1?
Yes, yes, I have.
Now, there are a series of eight photographs, and next to A1, are you familiar with what's depicted in those photos?
Yes.
Do those photos fairly and accurately depict the condition of the property at 14 Tower Road, as well as those other houses shown there, 18 Tower, 16 Tower, 17 Tower?
Yes.
And the street view as well?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so, let's talk about what's on the street, and likewise, there is like a key map with the third page, you see the key map?
Yes.
So, it shows the properties in question, so let's take the first one that's shown there, 18 Tower. Tell us a little bit about the size of that house and its relationship to where our house is, and how it comports with that home.
18 Tower is two, two houses down to the left of the subject property. It is a more modern, two-story colonial there, and that one is about 3,100 square feet.
So, on the key map, it's the one that's highlighted like in a pink, correct?
Correct.
All right, so now, let's look at 16 Tower, the one next over.
That would be the one that is green, and that is another, it's a little bit older of a two-story colonial, but that one there is again, two-story, and that one is about 3,100 square feet as well.
Now, where are you getting this floor areas from, these houses from?
I got it from the tax, tax records.
Is that from Livingston Township?
It's from New Jersey, yes.
So, let's take a look at 17 Tower, which is across the street, the blue lot that's highlighted on the corner of Tower and Beacon.
Again, that's a more modern, two-story colonial, and that one is about 3,400 square feet.
All right, so now, turning to the subject property on the key map, lot number 31, that's highlighted in yellow, let's talk about what's there, and then likewise, if you could address the second set of photos, photos seven and eight with regard to what's behind us.
So, the, the existing lot, or the dwelling that is there, again, is a one-story ranch. It's a bit outdated for today's modern standards, so we are proposing to demolish this house here and build a more modern, two-story colonial. The rear of the properties here, it's mainly wooded, there's woods behind this property and the properties behind this, and it's over 100 feet to the neighboring rear prop, or house.
Okay, so as you turn to the fourth page in Exhibit A1, the subject property, it's depicted with an X on it, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So, the lots that are behind us are deeper lots that front on Route 10, is that correct?
Yes.
So, there's houses on those lots that front on Route 10, and their backyards back up to us?
Correct.
Okay, and the photographs that you see there as being photographs seven and eight, depict a wooded area, and somewhere beyond the trees is the homes that front on Route 10, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, so let's talk about the rear yard setback that you're proposing, and why it is that you're proposing a deviation.
Again, the, the rear yard setback to the dwelling itself is 37.5, where, how much is required? 50 feet is required, so it's about 13 square, or 13 feet less, and mainly, that's because the, the property should be 200 feet in depth, and we are at 125. And we also wanted to keep that 45-foot front yard setback, so it triggered the rear yard.
Okay, now, what about the wooden platform on the back of the house? How close is that to the rear?
That is 33.4 to the rear yard, so it sticks out a little bit more, and that's just an entry or an exit out of the, the back door there.
Okay, now, let's get to the 600-pound gorilla in the room, let's talk about the habitable floor area ratios, let's see what you got there. I know you're in the R2 zone, which is substantially larger lots and bigger homes, so let's talk about what's proposed, why you're proposing it, and how you can justify it.
Again, the, we're asking for 31% where 18 is, is required, but this...
Now, let's forget about the percentages for a second, because the math sometimes is befuddling.
Right.
How big in square footage is the house that's proposed on this property, as it relates to the houses that we see here in the photographs, one, two, and three?
It's, it conforms, right, with the, the neighboring houses that are around there. They're all between 3,100 square feet and 3,400 square feet, and we're at 33.
Okay, please continue.
So, again, the, this lot is more closely related to the R4 zone, and in the R4 zone, you're allowed 30% of FAR, and we're at 31 here, so...
All right, so let's talk about what's permitted in this zone, the R2, what's the maximum habitable floor area itself, not the ratio, but the square footage?
4,870 is allowed.
And we are?
3,300.
And likewise, what's the percentage as it relates, if this was a conforming lot at 25,000 square feet, where would 18% get us?
4,500, you'd be allowed.
Okay, why don't you show us the house? And tell us a little bit about the architectural elements, what's proposed, what type of exterior materials, and what one could expect to see of this house as they drive down Tower Road.
So, here again, we have a more modern, two-story colonial, with some peaks for architectural accent, we have a front load, a two-car garage, a covered front entryway, some stone accents on the bottom, and horizontal hardy board siding.
Okay, now, is it similar in style to the home that's at 18 Tower?
Yes, very similar in style.
Okay. I don't really have anything else for Mr. Babula, are you certainly available for questions?
Thank you, does anyone on the board have any questions? Please.
Yes, I see the elevations, you have a total of about 20 feet between first floor and second floor, and the total height is 33 feet, so where is that 13 feet is, is going to be in the attic area, or?
Yes, that, the, the rest of that will be in the attic, but there, there is no, there's going to be a pull downstairs, so there's no habitable attic or, or anything like that proposed.
Anybody else have any questions?
I guess the only other question that I had is, I know you had said that the front yard setback was 45, the existing on the map was 45. I know your schedule A in the application says 45, but on your zoning table, you have it as 42 and a half is the average?
If you do the actual average calculation of where the front yards are, it is about 42, but the, there is the, the order, or the field map that says it should be 45.
I have one question, I don't know if, I don't remember if you mentioned it, how does the back line up with the other houses?
Let's see from the aerial photo. It's going to be very similar to what is, what is there, especially at 18 Tower. The, the proposed house is about 10 feet larger in depth than the existing. I'm just trying to look at the aerial photo. I bet I don't have, but yeah, it's, it's not going to, it's not closer to the property line than, than the neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any question? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Do you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Please.
Mr. Sheppes, Mr. Babula is going, is opining that the proposed development as designed exhibits adequate capacity to accommodate the proposed excess H, habitable floor area ratio without substantial detriment, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's consistent with, as he's testified to the other things and the other properties in the neighborhood?
Correct.
Thank you, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, and what I find is compelling in this particular situation is, as you can see, the last page on the exhibit is the zoning map, and this property being in the R2 zone, it's recognized that larger homes are, are appropriate in this area, otherwise, you would have had it zoned for something different, and in light of the fact that Mr. Babula testified that you're looking at potentially a home of 4,500 square feet, and this is not out of keeping with the homes that are immediately contiguous, that's why we felt it was important to give you the key map, so that you could see where these other homes are in relation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if you want...
We don't have any further witnesses, and I think I've said enough.
Okay. No... No argument from the board. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Which way?
You can give it to her.
All right.
I'll second.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Ms. Yuan?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman Beer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Would you like to call the last application, please?
Yes. The next matter scheduled is a variance for Block 404, Lot Eighteen, One Rock Hill Drive, Application Number 2024-45-V, Satyan Sampath.
Have a seat, please. Be comfortable.
Thank you, Board, for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Satyan Sampath. I'm a resident of One Rock Hill Drive.
Mr. Sampath, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Would you be kind enough to say your name again and then spell it for us?
Satyan is the first name. S as in Sam, A as in apple, T as in Tom, Y as in yellow, E as in elephant, N as in Nancy. Last name is Sampath. S as in Sam, A as in apple, M as in Mary, P as in Peter, A as in apple, T as in Tom.
And you're going, are you going to present testimony, or are you having someone else testify?
I'm going to give you a brief summary, and then Mr. Dubinett will help me with the other technical details.
So, Mr. Sampath, will you swear or affirm that any statements and testimony you give to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
Yes, I do.
And if you want, we can qualify, or we can put on the oath, you're an architect?
Sure.
All right. Would you again state your name and spell it for us, please?
Yes. Daniel Dubinett. D-A-N-I-A-L.
Mr. Dubinett, do you swear or affirm that any and all statements and testimony you give to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
I do.
Would you state your credentials, please, for the board again?
Master's degree, Architecture, NGIT, nineteen ninety-five. My license, two thousand and one. And it's current and in good standings, and I've appeared before this board before.
Thank you, Mr. Dubinett.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objections to witnesses except as expert in architecture. All yours.
Thank you, sir. So I'll start again. I'm a resident with, at One Rock Hill Drive, Livingston, New Jersey. I live there with my wife and two kids. The, as we've been there from two thousand fourteen onwards, the house is already under construction. We've gone through the permit process and everything. The construction started in late May, early June. The original plan, we don't have a basement in the house. It was originally a split level. And when we worked with Mr. Dubinett to construct the house, the original desire was to build an attic area for our, like, kids to have what are, what would be a replacement of the basement. But when we submitted the plans, we didn't include them in the original plans because of the cost differences that, you know, I was provided by the architects, by the contractor, sorry. So we originally thought of building the first level and the second level. And then, you know, in the middle of the construction, when the construction started, the contractor kind of explained that it's relatively cheaper to, to build the attic area as well from a living perspective versus, like, finishing the construction and then having all of them to come back here, basically, right? So, you know, I was, I wanted to do the right by the town, and that's why we are here to request for a variance of that living space, like, you know, in the attic area. It's mostly, it's not like, you know, there's no kitchen or anything like that. It's more of a, like, play area for the kids. That's the very brief summary. I'm not, like, you know, trying to add anything more. The structure of the house remains the same with or without the living area of the attic. The mass of the house remains the same, the outside, everything remains the same, as has been approved. We are not making any major changes to the house. It's, we just, like, you know, going to use it to, for the kids to have what would have been a basement, basically. So with that, I'll request Mr. Dubinett to give you guys more technical details about the house. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, thank you. So again, this project is located on One Rock Hill Drive. I would like to submit this as an exhibit. Do the slides I have in front of you? They consist-
Okay, we'll identify this as Exhibit A1.
Thank you.
Would you, and would you describe it for us?
Yes. This exhibit is photographs, aerial photograph of the site, the plans that you have, in addition to, I wanted to document the house as it is today, so I took some photographs today to show you how the house looks today, and a little bit of the neighborhood to give you context.
So how many, how many doc, how many pages or sheets are in this exhibit? Do we have this, Jack?
Six slides.
Six slides?
Yeah.
Who prepared, who prepared the slides?
I prepared the slides.
Do the slides accurately depict the images that are set forth in each of the six pages?
They do.
Or six slides?
Yes.
Thank you. It's Exhibit A1.
Thank you. So, oh, it moved. Well, my little rectangle moved. But the subject property is One Rock Hill. We are on the corner of Buford and Rock Hill. And like we talked about a little bit in the, in the beginning, is that we are here seeking a variance for habitable floor area and habitable floor area ratio. And there'll be no change to the exterior, so no additional dormers added. And so the house was planned as a pull-down staircase, of course, in the future, to allow them some future expansion. But they would like to make future today and be allowed to finish the attic. So take away the pull-down staircase, add the, add the steps, and finish the space with no change to the exterior. And this is allowed if we close our permits and then reopen. And that was something we talked about, that, okay, you don't have a basement, and I can show you the plans, that there is no basement, and it is just an additional space for the kids to play. It's in the attic, you know, so it has the sloping roofs. And I would like to run you through the plans. So this is the basement plan. And the only, they, they have a small mechanical room, which is this rectangle in the far-left corner. And the rest of the house, with its additions and renovations, is, is just a slab-on-grade. So technically, there's just this little mechanical room. And then it's a split-level home that's being renovated. And in the attic portion, it would yield us, this gray area is, so the way we look at it is, anything above six foot six in height in the attic that's accessible counts as FAR. So that, that shaded area will be one thousand and seventy-eight square feet. I could go over the numbers really quickly. The short story is that we are seeking a variance. The proposed is five thousand seven hundred and two square feet. It's twenty-two percent, twenty-two point one eight percent of the lot. Eighteen percent's required, so we're four point one eight percent larger than allowed. And one thousand seventy-eight square feet in terms of the numbers. And again, what makes this unique is, I mean, it's a very interesting application, but there's technically no basement to the house that's, that's usable. And then there will be no change to the exterior. So I'd like to show you what is the exterior. And I think the best way is maybe the photographs of what's happening today. So, it's hard to control this.
The, the house has already been built, right?
We're almost-
Everything is approved. We're just talking about the attic right now.
Yeah, we're just talking about the attic, so there'll be no change to the roof-
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you need to see all of it.
I'm sorry? Yeah, there's a very interesting, I don't know, zoning that Livingston has. That is, if you don't make any changes, let's say you build your house, and we're approved, and you have the pull-down staircase, which we were talking about. If you, if we were to close our permits, a few months later reopen them, it doesn't count as FAR. So it's this gray area that exists. And so, yes, if we close our permits, reopen up a permit, though, it won't be included in habitable floor area or the ratio.
Mr. Chairman, that, that is correct. That's Section 170-87TD1 under the current ordinance.
Yeah, but doesn't, I'm confused on that, though, because doesn't that say that's just about the floor area? It doesn't say anything about the ra, if you exceed the ratio, then you're still allowed?
Yes.
I didn't know about that. So.
Again, I'm not going into the technical, the technicalities of it, but, yeah, to answer your question, we are, like, you know, that was originally the plan, right? We are not doing anything different than what we are originally intended to do, which was to close the permits and not now, like, very much in the future, like, say if we can add to the attic area. But then I was given very exorbitant numbers by the contractors to come in later and do all the same stuff. And like, you know, this is, like, we're trying to bite the bullet right now and just get the work done while the contractor and everybody is there in the house and reduce our, like, you know, pressure on us in terms of moving out and moving back in and with young kids. So that is the only desire right now to get this done, basically.
So this is a view, this is interesting. So the, this, the One Rock Hill's on the left and Three Rock Hill's on the right. So I just wanted to show you the context, that the house fits very nicely within the neighborhood. It is a context. And then, I'd like to take, if I can, this is from today. This is how the house is, so there'll, again, be no change to the roof lines. This is the front. This is the side elevation that faces Buford. So contextually, we have no, well, nobody in the front, of course. But, because we're on the corner lot and Buford, and then the woods, and then, I guess, it's Eisenhower, no one is negatively affected by this, and of course, there's no change to the roof lines that will exist. So it'll just be a benefit for Mr. Sampath that he could have a place for the kids to go. And then I wanted to show you, contextually, this is across the street. This is Number Six, Rock Hill. And then we have Number Five, and then we have our adjacent neighbor, Number Three. So no kind of impact to the, or negative impact to the neighbors or the streetscape or anybody, but allow them some additional space that they would love to have for the children to play. And again, most houses have a basement, and I actually tried to convince them originally, let's knock it down and build a gigantic basement. And contextually, he wanted to keep a lot of the character of the house, but be able to expand it. And that's where we're at today.
Okay, does anybody in the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Please.
Ms. Hollis, do you have a copy of Exhibit A1? Okay. Mr. Dubinett, are you opining that the variance for an increase in the permitted floor area as requested is compatible to what's going on and can be accommodated by this without any substantial detriment to the zoning plan or the ordinances? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you're saying that the proposed improvements are compatible with other neighborhood properties as you demonstrated in these photographs, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
I have that. Thank you.
Does anybody on the board want to make a statement?
I want to make a statement. The way I see this plan is to basically add a third level of livable space. That's total about a thousand, a thousand square feet on top of the four thousand six hundred we already, you know, being built. In my opinion, it's too big. That's my comment.
Anybody else on the board have any statements to make?
I guess I want to concur. I mean, I get that there's a way around it. If you close the permit and do it, I guess if that's the way to do it, then do it. But I don't think for the board it makes any sense, because you're already at the max of what's allowed. And now you're asking for another thousand square feet.
Can I make a statement, sir?
Please.
So, yes, it, you're right. I mean, I'm not denying any of it. The disadvantage of closing the permits and then doing it would also mean, like, the whole crew and people who are working right now will have to come back. And that will also be, like, meaning that my family, the kids, again, we are already in, like, you know, moving, moved out of our space and living in a rental space with, like, some sort of problems with the kids and stuff like that from a schooling perspective. So the, right now, the advantage to do this, get this variance approval, is to make sure that, you know, while the people are there, the people, constructors, people who are already working in the house can take advantage of the situation and then build the house, basically. And I, I agree with you that it is a thousand square feet more. But if I had a basement, then I wouldn't have requested for all these things. It's not, I'm not changing the exterior of the house, or I'm not doing anything extraordinary with the house. It's already an approved house. It's just a space for the, like, like, literally replacing the basement, if you see that, basically. That's the only request that I have.
Mr. Chairman, I don't generally comment on, and try to sway the board either way. But what the board does not know is that there are many, many, many applications that have gone for permitting, that the builders have been kind of taking advantage of that section of the ordinance. So those cases don't, do not come to this board, because they just, they're allowed to do that. What this applicant is doing is actually coming before the board to ask permission instead of going through that motion.
Thank you.
So it's like a technicality. And through permitting, it would happen anyway. Okay.
Which is, I think, so interesting, that when cases become for you for variances that you, you know, well, which we agreed to tonight, but that, that's a great place to close the loophole, right? So.
I'm, we are doing, actually, the right thing by requesting you guys to hopefully, like, you know, bring it to your attention and, like, you know, everything is, like, not trying to take advantage of any loopholes, basically, to be honest. That's, that's the request.
Does anybody else have any statements to make?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Mr. Sampath, just so you understand, I said this at a prior hearing or a prior matter that was before us. There are six members of the board eligible to vote today here. You need five yes votes on both the HFA and the HFAR. If you get less than five yes votes, it's a denial. And as the chairman was explaining previously, if it's denied, there's a whole different dynamic about coming back. So you need to make a decision as to whether or not you want to proceed in that manner or wait until there are seven full board members.
I don't know. We started the commenting part of it, if you wanted to continue, or do we roll right into a motion?
We can continue, sir. We can.
So this will affirm you want to proceed with six members, knowing the consequences of that? All right, thank you.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion, one way or the other? Okay. I'll make a motion to accept this application.
I'll second.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
Ms. Yuan?
No.
No.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.